I am, we are, this is Norwood. Hello, everybody, and welcome to the inaugural edition of I Am Norwood's election series here with me this evening is incumbent Norwood Board of Education trustee Heather Garcia. Heather, let's just jump right into it here, trying to get everybody in in a half hour, no more, no less. Opening question, why are you doing this? What motivates you? Especially after the first term here?
Right, those are the most challenging. Um, you know, listen, I got into this because there were some stuff in the school. My son was in eighth grade at the time, and I really wanted to see change in our school. There was some really great things about our school that were happening, but there were also a lot of things that I felt weren't being done appropriately or correctly, and I wanted to promote change within our school. So that's why I got on the board to start. Now, as going through the last three years, it's definitely been an experience. You learn a lot within the first few years. And I'm looking for to be reelected because I really think that we have created as a board some significant change. We have a long way to go. We have a lot more to do. I do believe that. And I want to be part of that change. I think it's about our children. I have a kindergartner coming in, so I have nine long years to be at Norwood public school moving forward. So I really do find it important that we do what's right for our children, that we move our school in the right direction, and we make sure that when we're doing all of this, we're keeping in mind the community and being fiscally responsible in the process.
Okay, uh, what do you think are the biggest issues facing the board at present, seeing as you have a bird's eye view right now?
So, um, I actually have a positive outlook on the school moving forward right now.
That's allowed?
Yeah, I do. I think we have a great new superintendent who's come in, and I do have high, high hopes for him, and I do think he'll deliver. Um, we do have some new administration, so of course, there's going to be some learning curves there, obviously, while they get their footing. Um, I think for me, one of the bigger challenges that I see is probably us really pushing forward our curriculum and trying to find a way to differentiate the middle school from the elementary school, even though we're under one building. I do, over the years, have seen how the middle school gets a little forgotten, that they are a middle school, not just part of the elementary school. So I would really like to see that. I'd like to see electives for the for the older middle school children. I would love to see us have more than one language, world language, other than Spanish in our school, since the high school offers so many. I'd love to get a jumpstart on that. Yeah, I would just, I think that's just would be a phenomenal idea. I do think moving forward, we're gonna need space. So I think that is going to become a challenge for us when we start to look at in the future of what we need and how much space we need. So I do think that's going to become something that we need to look at. Um, and I also think that, you know, learning after the pandemic is something that is going to be a challenge to get us caught up. I would love to see a summer school program be put in place, not just for people who need the extra help or children who need the extra help, but for anybody who wants to be a part of it, even if it's just to get a jumpstart on the next school year. Um, I would love to see that. So I mean, those are some of the things off the top of my head that I really think are super important these next coming years.
Okay, okay. Uh, switching gears just for a moment, where did you attend elementary school and or high school?
So I attended Harrington Park Elementary from kindergarten to seventh grade. I then went to Norwood Public School for eighth grade. I graduated North Public School, and then I graduated Northern Valley Old Supan for high school.
Okay, so you're from the old school here, how about that?
Yeah.
What, if anything, do you take away from your own education locally that you think could be applicable here today as opposed to back then?
Oh, man, that's a tough question. Um, there's so many things. Um, listen, I think one of the biggest things that struck me when I first ran or why I got on the board was, you know, when I went to school, there was just this feeling of community. There was this, this, this feeling in the school where you walk down the hallways and you're just, you know, it felt welcoming and you were, you were just happy to be there. I think, of course, the education that we get in, you know, this area is, is phenomenal. It has been. Um, you know, there's always room for growth, but I do think if you look at us compared to other areas, we are doing really well in that in that comparison.
Okay.
But I think one of the biggest things for me would just be able to see that that community feel within the school come back. I mean, we have it outside the school. Our community is fabulous and fantastic and just, I mean, they come together like no other town, I think. But, you know, inside the school, there just has been this feeling that, you know, people aren't together, sort of feel sectioned off, and I really would just love to see us all as one again.
Okay, okay. Um, name one thing you'd like to see the school put more tax money towards? If anything?
For our children, of course. I always find myself in this weird, you know, realm, because I am somebody who believes in being fiscally responsible and making sure that we're spending the tax money on the right things. Um, I'm not against spending money, but I am against spending money on things that do not help our children. So, I mean, I would love to see us possibly hire a few new teachers that could help with world languages, like I said before. I think it would be great if we could use more money to really update our school. You know, instead of just doing what's cost the cheapest, let's do what looks the nicest. Let's show some pride in in our school as a whole. Um, I think that's spending money on, you know, anything that really helps push our children to the next level, like that summer school program that I spoke about would be phenomenal. Um, so I think as long as it is something that is helping all of our children, I'm fine with it, within reason, of course. But I just think that we have to do focused spending when it comes to spending.
Okay, related question, what, if anything, can you name that you'd like to see the school spend less taxpayer money on that it might be currently?
You're trying to get me tonight, huh? So, um, I think one of the things for me with taxpayer money is that I would like to see us spend less money. Okay, let me rephrase. I would like us to be more consistent on spending money on raises. So I feel like if we are going to raise up our top administration, then we need to be able to raise our teachers also who are in the in the classrooms every day. You know, dealing with our children, teaching them, you know, they're the frontline of the school, in my opinion. And if we're going to be able to find money to raise or give raises to, you know, our top administrators or one or two people, we should be able to find it for everybody.
Okay, um, give us your thoughts on how, and you alluded to this earlier, I think, how Norwood Public School is handling the COVID pandemic to date?
Listen, I gotta tell you, I mean, I can be critical sometimes, but I do think me, no, no, right, I could be critical sometimes, but I do think that Norwood really stood up in the pandemic. We had issues. There's no doubt about that. There were things that needed to be addressed. There were, you know, issues that came about, but overall, I think we really just slayed it. We did it. We did it well. Um, and I think we did it better than a lot of other towns. Could we have done things better? Absolutely. But I think a lot of us were just trying to figure it out as we go. It was a new uncharted territory that we were in. Um, and I think we did the best that we could do. Um, I think the teachers just blew it out the water. I can't even, I can't even imagine what type of stress they had to deal with to get it done, but they did. Um, I think that the kids really were able to like learn in an environment that they've never learned in before, and that just really shows how strong they are, you know, like, I mean, I don't know if I could have done it, you know, as a child their age, so. I mean, they really did do it amazing, and the parents really were the backbone to, you know, teaching from home too, also. It wasn't easy, but I do think we really stood out and handled it well.
Excellent. What, if anything, do you believe Norwood Public School could do differently, if anything, with regard to its special needs population?
So, man, you are tough with these questions, huh?
I just put them out there.
So I really do have a soft spot for special needs students and special needs children in general. Um, you know, I have family members who have special needs children, and, you know, my daughter has had some struggles over the years in school. Nobody would know it because she's just this like vivacious person. But I just, um, I really do have a soft spot for it. So with that being said, um, I do think that we could do better, and I think that we have someone new now in the child study team. So I think that she comes from a bigger district and is really looking to put in services that maybe we didn't have before, so I think that's great. Um, I think we could do a CPAC better, which I know that they're working towards now, so that's, that's, that's good too. I would love to see us to be able to retain some of our children and programs within Norwood, so they still get the community aspect of it while getting the learning that they need. I know that's not always something that can happen, but I would love to see that. I think we could do better all around with special education.
What is the CPAC for those of us that aren't on the inside?
Special, it's a special education parent, I think it's Advisory Council.
Got you. Okay.
So, I mean, it's more like special education parents coming together within our school and working out things to find ways of doing things better for those students. Um, I think it can be such a phenomenal thing and bring awareness to parents who maybe aren't, don't understand or know what's going on in the special needs communities. So I really do think it's a great thing. Um, but I do think overall, we could just do better. So I think we should.
You alluded to languages earlier. Is there anything else you'd like to see more emphasized in the Norwood Public School curriculum than you currently are seeing?
I think we need to do better with our reading programs. Um, I do think that we've fallen short a little bit on that. Um, but I do think that Mr. Olmer's coming in, our new superintendent, and ha- really has put an emphasis on trying to get the things that we don't have in. It's a lot, right? Like, he can only do so much at a time. But yeah, it really has kind of like taken, you know, the rain and kind of started to really work on that. So I do appreciate that, but I do think our reading programs should be better. I would like to see a stronger Spanish program, if that's what we're going to use in that, and let's just say, well, I'd like to see more languages. That's the only language we're gonna do. I think we could do it better. Um, I, I think we would need maybe another Spanish teacher or half a Spanish teacher to do it, but I think we shouldn't be going into high school and going into Spanish one when other districts are going into Spanish two. We should be stronger than that. So I think that we could do better with with things along those lines. Um, I think our math, we have started to, we started a new program in math, so I believe that we're pushing forward our math curriculum. I'm very big on math. I think we could offer more math for like the higher grades. I mean, obviously, the younger grades need to, you know, be building up to that point, but the higher grades, you know, some of the children get to the point where they're above where we're at, but there's not really anything to offer them unless they go. I think they think they can take this class at the high school, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, so I think that we could do better with just preparing all the grades as they push up towards the high school goal. And we all share the same curriculum center, so we should all be using that curriculum center and working with the other towns and seeing what they do well and say, okay, well, you do this well, maybe we can incorporate this or vice versa. So I think we really need a lot of that.
Excellent. Um, you'd missed, you'd mentioned Mr. Olmer a few times here. Going off the path just a little bit. Who has the better hair, Mrs. Gross with the flawless bob or Mr. Olmer, who has pretty tidy hair himself?
Oh, my gosh, I don't know. That's a really hard question.
We won't tell him.
I'm gonna have to go with Ms. Gross because she, her hair was always perfect.
Came correct with the hair. There's no replacing that.
Never saw it messed up ever.
Never, never.
Never.
Excellent.
But Mr. Olmer is a close second, gotta tell you.
He is. It's, it's pretty immovable itself, isn't it? Looking sharp so far.
My gosh.
What, give me an enrichment class topic you'd like to see here. So that wouldn't necessarily make the curriculum, but you'd be like, that's kind of cool to put after school if people were interested.
Oh, my gosh, I don't know. There's so many things. Um, I don't know what everyone would be into. I mean, I guess you would need a lot of interest. Um, I would love to see, you know, different types of art classes for enrichment. Um, you know, maybe not just like art where you paint or anything like that, but graphic design. You know, the kids are really into computers these days. I would love to see that type of of enrichment happen, like I was talking about the math. I'd love to see kids who are excelling in math be able to do maybe, you know, a higher version than maybe we offer. That would be great. I love book clubs. I don't know if kids are into book clubs, but I would think that would be really cool. Um, so I don't know, those would be my like top few things, but those might be mine, not theirs.
Okay, okay. If you could change one existing NPS policy, whatever topic that might be, what would it be at the current time?
What NPS policy? I don't know. Um, well, I was able to really push for us to record meetings because we never did that before. And they have, they have been doing that. I think that was my one policy that I was really pushing to change or update, and we did that. So I'm pretty sure, I guess that would be my pick for now. If I get reelected, I'm gonna have to pick a new one, so stay tuned for that. I'll let you guys know as soon as I do it.
I did one term on the council, and I don't know if anybody in town knows that because it was never filmed. So I was
Oh, my gosh.
The board meetings being filmed, so.
Yeah, wow. It's a great thing. It really is. It's because here's the thing, we have new parents that move or new families that move into the community all the time. They don't know what's going on. And, you know, they can just go onto our website right now and watch a board meeting and kind of catch themselves up. You have parents who can't make the meetings. It's just they have three kids at home, two kids doing sports, whatever the case is. Now they can go back and watch and keep informed. I think that's so important for our community to be informed because how can we show our community that we're doing what's right for them, for their children, with their money if they can't see it?
Right, right. Um, I'm gonna give you a hypo based on a recent matter that an existing client called me about, actually.
Okay.
Get your visceral reaction to this. Child is playing soccer during gym. This is, facts are changed slightly, but nobody knows the difference, so run with me here.
Okay.
Uh, gets kicked, goes down in the heap, can't get up. Nurse responds from the school, leaves him on the ground for about a half hour until ambulances come. Try, in the process, tries to tell the parents, it's, it's nothing, it's muscle. It's a muscular thing. You should be able to walk and get up, but just put him in the car, send him to the hospital, whatever. And come to find out later, he actually fractured his leg in two places, but the nurse did nothing to determine this either way, apparently. If you're hearing this either at a school board meeting for the first time or during, say, a closed session of a school board meeting, what would you be your inclination as to what to do with the nurse? For not perhaps taking appropriate steps to secure the leg, timely diagnose or properly diagnose her and what have you? Any related issues you could pull out of that hypothetical?
So, my gut reaction is to fire her. That's my gut reaction, but I'm a little bit, I'm on the business side. So I sometimes have to pull, you know, from the private sector into public sector moment, but that's my first inclination as a parent, as a board member, for that poor child, for the family. In my mind, she's done. However, not knowing any background information, not knowing, you know, has this nurse ever had other issues? Um, has she had a record that just has been completely, you know, untarnished? Was it just a bad judgment call? I mean, I would need to know those things before making that final determination, but if you're just asking me right off of just the the knee jerk reaction, that nurse wouldn't be at my school anymore.
Okay, if hypothetically, or pushback, what sort of discipline or alternative handling of that would you, would you like to see in that sort of scenario?
Well, for like after the fact, or if I could control the whole situation?
After the fact, yeah. Basically, what? If you got the vibe that the school board wasn't going to terminate this individual, what would you rather, what would you like to see in the alternative as some sort of remedial measure?
Well, I definitely do think that there should be some sort of consequence, possibly a unpaid leave, depending upon what we can do, because, you know, what people don't understand is, as a board, we still are limited to how much we can do to somebody in a situation. You know, a lot of people think as the private sector, where we could just cut somebody loose, that's just done. Doesn't work like that in the public sector or in the school. So there's a lot of steps you have to take to get to that point, so it's not as easy as one, two, three. Obviously, if somebody isn't supposed to be there, someone, you know, will make it happen. Um, we hope that that doesn't happen. I'm sure, and I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure I could speak for several members of the board too, you know? We don't want to see that happen. Um, but um, I mean, I would like to see some disciplinary action happen, some training. It would seem to me that she would need updated training to know what happens in incidences like that or in emergency situations. Um, so I think that would be my, my, you know, take from it, she needs training, and we need to have some disciplinary response to it.
Okay, um, running a little head on questions here, I thought would be a little less on time, but let me see if I could throw another one in here. Before he gets my closer. This might be a strange one to ask, and you could be as vague as you want. See, actually, I'm already, but give me your analysis of the current school board, broad strokes, as comfortable as you can as a current school board member.
Listen, you know, as a school board member and with the rest of the school board, um, the people on the board, we don't always agree. We have our moments. I sometimes call us like, you know, our dysfunctional family, our group. Um, but it is ours. Yeah, but it is ours, and I do appreciate everybody who is on the board. You know, it's not easy to be a board member. It's not easy to, you know, be in the public light, especially if something's going wrong or parents don't like something, you know? And then also be in the community. Um, absolutely, we signed up for it, so we kind of know what we're getting ourselves into. But at the same time, it's not an easy task. So I do appreciate everybody that is on the board with me. And, um, you know, I think we have our moments, but overall, I do think that we've really come to an understanding with each other, and we have been able to really work together to get to a common goal.
Give us your, give us as an insider, your your, uh, a breakdown of the time commitment. It really involves being on the board. I mean, I think a lot, I feel like a lot of people like the idea of poking a board member or council members in the eye about things, but what if they had to do it? What kind of time commitment are they looking at?
I think everybody, I think everybody puts a different time commitment into, to some degree, because it depends upon how many committees are you on, how many, you know, different types of groups are you getting involved with at the school? As, you know, as a board member, as a presence. Um, how many continuing ed credits are you taking? This, over the three years, I've taken over fifty classes and over ninety continuing ed credits. So, I mean, I'm definitely kind of immersed myself into pretty much anything I do, but definitely this. Um, because I wanted to learn and I want to be a good board member for my community, for my child, for your children. Um, so the only way to do that is to really just continue to learn. I go to other board meetings for other towns just to see how they operate and see what they do there, so that, you know, if there's something that they do better than us, I can bring it back to our board and say, hey, why don't we try this? Um, so for me, I put a serious amount of time into being a board member. I mean, if I just had to do it on a monthly basis, I don't know, maybe I put about ten to twelve to fifteen hours a week, give or take. So, I mean, overall, that, what is that, sixty hours a month? Uh, give or take for me. Um, I'm a little overboard, so you can't really take it from that. You can't really take that from, from me, just because I do all the extra classes and stuff, and I go to board meetings to find they like, no, you don't have to do that. I would think in a general idea, two to three hours a week, give or take, depending upon, you know, what you're working in or what you're working on, um, would probably be the ideal timeframe.
Okay, uh, two quick softballs to close it out, and I'll give you a chance for some closing thoughts too. Which current school board member has the coolest place that they sat at when attending virtual meetings?
Well, Bogazia, one hundred percent.
Stay allowed.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
You have to think twice about that one. Um, I wanted to be in the movie theater with him. It was great. So he had the coolest spots, yeah.
Excellent. All right, and the final one. And then we hopefully have a minute or two for closing. What is your feeling on fruit rollups?
Oh, my God.
Why fruit rollups?
I like fruit rollups, but I like fruit by the foot better because you get more, but, you know, I guess that's being greedy, right?
Rollup itself does not measure to a foot, you're saying?
Yes, correct. That's true. And I do like the ones that have the little tattoos on them. They're really cool.
I did not know they had tattoos.
You have tattoo for, come on, you asked the question. You don't know that?
That's why I ask.
And this is why I stump you. But I'm for fruit rollups, a hundred percent.
Do they have a place in the modern diet?
Probably not. Probably not, but I won't tell if you don't.
Fair enough. All right, closing thoughts. Is there anything that you would like to get out there? Whoever dares listen to this for the full half hour that maybe I didn't ask about today?
I think you're pretty thorough. Um, you know, I just think that, listen, I, I, I want to be reelected, obviously. I want to serve the town of Norwood on the Board of Education. I want to work for our children. I want to make sure that all of our children get the best education possible. Um, and I want to make sure that we're doing it the right way and we're doing it in a fiscally responsible way. Um, that's very important to me because I know that there are people in town that don't use the school and are still living here paying into it. So I would want to be, um, responsible with their money also. However, you know, I do want to give the children the best education possible, so. Um, I just hope that everyone will revote for me or vote me back in, and let me keep my seat. If not, I totally understand. There are two other candidates that you could vote for. If not, I totally understand. There are two other candidates that you could vote for. Um, but yeah, seriously, I mean, I just, I just want to do what's right for Norwood and for Norwood Public School.
Excellent. With that, I will leave you for, to your evening, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me and thank you for everyone who took the time to listen to this full half an hour.
Excellent.
Have a good one. Thank you.